Good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of October 20th, 2014, in the Town Council. Steve, if you could lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Delores.
Counselor Hammond?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Kotkin?
Here.
Counselor Manusows?
Here.
Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Rell?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari?
Here. Thank you, Delores. Our first order of business is public comment on a hearing item on the resolution approving an agreement between the Town of Weathersfield and the Department of Homeland Security for financial assistance. Is there anybody in the public here this evening who wishes to speak on that topic, which is the hearing item? Anyone wishing to speak on that item, the hearing item on the financial assistance? Last call? Okay. Oh, yes, Bob, go ahead.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Regarding your, what do you call it?
Financial assistance.
Right. Your financial assistance. You're always getting financial assistance. I would urge you to turn it down. Start a trend. You know, the only thing that we mortals are able to identify with what's known as eternal life is a government project or a government grant. It just seems to go on and on, one after the other, and there isn't ever an end to government grants. And I would urge you, let's cut the cord and let's stop taking money. It's money that has to be borrowed to give you what you want. And I think that's wrong. You know, you're constantly, this entire council, right across this state, every council continues to ask for money, and knowing that the one who's going to give you the money has to go borrow it because they don't have it today. It just doesn't exist anymore. They gotta have the crank on the money machine down in the basement continuing to operate 28 hours a day to keep up your appetite for money. Please, turn it down. And then start something like that on all of them. We've gotta stop this spending.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
(inaudible).
Anyone else wishing to speak on that topic? Seeing none, declare the hearing closed. We'll move on to general comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening on any topic?
Good evening. Martin Maliki, 79, South Wall Road. I see in this evening's agenda, you have listed discussing the potential of spending over $100,000 to resurface the web tennis courts. I would like to suggest that the money would be better spent on the Emerson Williams gym floor. You're looking to resurface a court that will be used by far less people on a weekly basis than the gym floor is used on a daily basis. The Emerson Williams gym floor is in terrible shape. While all the other schools in town have hardwood floors, the Emerson Williams gym floor is tile overlaid on concrete. The mastic that holds it together contains asbestos. With a floor being tile over concrete, someone who falls on this floor is at risk for a more severe injury in comparison to the other gym floors in town. The gym floor tiles are continually breaking apart, and whole tiles have been known to come completely loose. There are numerous voids in the tile floor where tiles or parts of tiles have come out. These voids are trip hazards. In order to try to maintain the floor, it is heavily waxed on a regular basis. This creates a lot of dust and makes the floors very slippery. Due to the asbestos in the mastic, the State Department of Health has indicated that scooters should not be used on the gym floor. This results in the students at Emerson Williams having a slightly different curriculum than the other elementary schools in town. There are $1,200 worth of scooters sitting in storage that the physical education teacher would love to use but can't. The gym is used by approximately 150 kids every single school day. In addition, it is used by the community at night and on the weekends, which is going to have a bigger impact on the community? Resurfacing the web tennis courts or replacing this gym floor? Every morning, the first through third grade students at Emerson Williams start their day by sitting on this floor. What is the proper response when one of these students asks, "What am I supposed to do with this?" You look at them, they're holding up a whole tile in their hand that came loose because the mastic gave way. If you're wondering, this has happened. Do you tell them to throw it away? If so, where? With the asbestos in the mastic, is it a hazardous waste? You have budgeted over $100,000 for the tennis courts. There are many alternatives for replacing the Emerson Williams gym floor, and some may not cost that much. And one option, you might be able to use an interlocking floor system that would be placed over the existing floor, thus reducing the need to disturb the asbestos in the current floor that's in place. Even a temporary fix would be better than nothing. The replacement of this floor has been in capital improvement budget for years. However, it's not been accomplished. It is time to replace this floor. If money's the issue, we need to think outside this box. This floor needs to become the Town Council priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Bonfisudo, and I live at 30 Orchard Hill Drive. I'm here this evening with my family, friends, and neighbors to show support for the Samuel B. Webb tennis courts. In 2012, my youngest son, Christian, who enjoys tennis and is a member of the United States Tennis Association, wrote a letter with our support and sent pictures of our deteriorating web tennis courts to the president and CEO of the United States Tennis Association, asking him if their organization could help fix our courts. In the letter, he wrote that he would love to ride his bike to the courts, to play with his family, friends, and classmates, and to have a singles match with his then-second grade teacher, Mr. Silver. A short time later, we received a response from the USTA. They sent us a brochure and appropriate paperwork explaining how they can help. We immediately delivered it to Kathy Bagley at the Parks and Recreation Office, and that's when the magic continued. Here we are, two years later, with enough money in our capital improvement fund, an $18,000 grant from the USTA, and a winner of our bid, RS Sight &amp; Sports of Seymour. With your support, we are about to hit an ace on this project. And on behalf of my family, tennis friends, and neighbors, we ask that each of you respectfully to please pass this proposal for new web tennis courts, which become a wonderful recreation facility for our school and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
David Kuruk, 149 Broad Street. Glad to see so many people here. Usually I come here and there's two people here, the regulars, and today we have a bunch of people, and I like to see community input, and I guess it's about the schools. So, I think, I included, have two kids, one in high school, one in Greerham School, and I realize that schools are very important to communities, and it's a shame when schools are going into disrepair and nothing's being done despite requests by the public, but I think you guys will do the right thing. And, Hurley, I know I spoke about you running last time, and I sarcastically said good luck, I know, but I do wish you luck. When I was in college, I was on a rep for the undergraduate, and I ran for president. I got beat very badly. I campaigned, I spoke to people, and I put up posters all over campus, and I just lost. So, I know how it feels to win, I know how it feels to lose, though. But I'm not saying you're gonna lose, but it's gonna be an exciting day to see the votes coming. Personally, I'm a Democrat, so I don't really want you to win, but I'm not voting for Warren also because he's not in my voting district. I got Carrera, who's running on a poll, so even if I don't vote for him, he's gonna win. So, good luck to you. And I'd also like to mention that there's a new business in town on the same side of, I think, the new Democratic headquarters is on Salas Dean, across the street from the Town Hall, down the way. Is that where it is? And there's a new restaurant also that I know I saw Paul go do, what's it called? Ikoichi? And I've gone there a few times, and like all new restaurants, it's a hibachi and sushi restaurant. I've gone to the other businesses, establishments, bars, and restaurants that have been in that location before. And all of them failed, and it's almost like a curse. It's kind of in a bad spot because the entrance is really in the back. But I think when the word gets out, this business is gonna thrive, because I went there a few times. In the last businesses, I went once or twice, I never went back because they weren't good. But this place is really good. They give you a good amount of food and good prices, and competes with Ginza and what's the other one? Starts with an S, Saki. I think it tops them. So, I like to support my local businesses, so I just want to give them a little plug, and thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Yes, in the back of the car.
Laura Clementon, 31 Fairmount Street. Sorry. I'm speaking tonight as a middle school parent and a board member of the George D. Ritchie Soccer Club regarding the condition of our soccer fields in town. Our club provides soccer programs for about 800 Weathersfield children and is reliant on a relationship with the town for the use of fields. On any given weekend, about 100 out-of-town spectators come to Weathersfield to watch their children play soccer. This weekend, I overheard a parent from Shelton complaining about the quality of the upper Mill field. She then said, "I thought Weathersfield was supposed to be a nice town." I asked that you walk along the fields at Charles Wright, Dean, or Mill Woods to see if you agree that we, as a town, can do better for our kids. Over the many years that I've been involved, I've seen the quality of these fields diminish to the point where we are now unable to use the field at Dean because it was deemed by the town to be unsafe. This impacts the middle school PE program, the high school soccer teams, and our travel teams. This field needs our immediate attention to be returned to not only usable condition but to become a quality field that is properly maintained. Our soccer club is willing to contribute up to $30,000 for irrigation on Dean Field contingent on a plan from the town that would spell out a long-term plan for continual upkeep. We look forward to a conversation with the town to see how we can be part of a solution. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. At the last Town Council meeting, I had mentioned that we were in the political season, and I mentioned in that regards of the various signs that I see on what we call the snowshells, the sacred snowshells that we have in town. And I continue to see them. I don't know, do citizens need to call in, or is it a duty of the town to pick these signs up and take them away when they're on the snowshell? They cheapen the town tremendously. And if they were a citizen's sign, they would've been gone a long time ago. But I would hope that you folks would take action. Several people have been talking tonight about the web tennis court and replacement. And I wanted to say a few words myself about this issue. I don't think it's a good wise deal just because you got a grant and just because you think you need to have a new tennis court out there at the web school, that it's really a good investment. I would think, clean that asphalt up, put in some gravel, and put in some topsoil, and plant trees, or put flowers or something else. That whole area is just blacktop and school. That's it. Half blacktop and half school. Why don't you put flowers? Do something with it than just put more blacktop. I know you're gonna put some kind of a concrete top, that's what you were talking about, I believe. Maybe it's a lot black, maybe it's some other color, but the fact is, continue to cover everything? I don't think that's good. And I think that we should save that money. Not only save that money, that school, the web school, when they renovated that eight or 10 years ago, they did like every other school in this town, they never finished it. You have windows that have been leaking. You folks all know about those windows. Why don't you put the money into getting those windows fixed? You save heating and cooling if you put new windows in that school. You've gotten grants before, here you go. Look for more money because you can't afford to take care of what you currently have. And there you have a tennis court that you should just wreck it, get it out of there, make it into some little garden. What the heck? And use the money to fix those, put brand-new windows in at web school. Now, this man was talking about the floor at another school. That's not a bad idea either. But that man should know that every year, the Town Council gives the Board of Education money to take care of renovations in the schools and fix up things, and when they spend the money elsewhere, that man and others should be screaming. But I don't hear them screaming. If you give money to fix the school, that's where the money should go. It shouldn't go elsewhere. And that's what the Board of Education does, they spend it elsewhere. And that's not the way to do it. Also, talking about money, I noticed in a rare reminder, Town of Weathersfield has purchased four more acres of land somewhere on Ridge Road. Isn't that in the newspaper? I haven't seen it anywhere else, just here. If it's wrong, then tell me it's wrong. For open space? No? Are you doing that?
We took a property at tax sale.
Oh, it was a tax sale?
Wait a minute. But the owner redeemed it before the time period was up, so it stayed with the owner. But we didn't pay anything for it.
So, you didn't pay anything for it? Thank goodness.
No, no.
That's all? I wanted to know where it was, and, you know, why would we pay for it?
Was it really nice-to-land? I don't know.
Especially if it was a tax sale, you could've grabbed it for probably nothing. But the fact is, we need to save money, you know? You talk about doing these tennis courts and running courts, or whatever that thing is around the high school. We have so many other projects that need to be done, yet we're short money all the time. And why are we short? You people have given money away that you've had. And I normally list off all those things, but I'm sure you don't want to hear more. But there's a lot of money out there that if you managed, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in. But your poor management skills just aren't there to do something good. And, you know, like I say, give money away and then raise our taxes. That's not the right way to do it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Young. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Yes, in the back corner, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sobin, and I live at 16 Straddle Hill in Weathersfield, where I've lived with my family for over 20 years. And actually, I hadn't intended to come tonight, but I felt compelled to do so because I have been making calls over the last several years to the Town Manager, the Mayor's Office, our Legislative Delegation about the web tennis courts, which I urge you to refurbish and reconstruct. Those courts have been a source of many years of pleasure for me and my whole family. And I should also say that it's really not self-serving since my children are now graduated from grad school, and one doesn't even live here anymore. But if they were refurbished, would I go? Certainly, I would. Those courts provided, you know, a source of great entertainment, fun, exercise, and inexpensive sport for a lot of children in the surrounding neighborhoods, where somewhere they could ride their bikes during the days after school, on the weekends, the summer camps. Actually, my son was one of the counselors one year, and they were always looking for things to do with the kids when they had a camp in that area of the town. Tennis is an inexpensive sport, and you get a racket, some sneakers, and a few tennis balls, and you're ready to go. It's not really a short season now. You can go from November to, you know, I'm sorry, from April to November with the kind of weather we've been having of late. So, it's great exercise. I know we have all these things about kids and obesity. We don't need, you know, specific programs to spend a lot of money on. You just let kids go out and do what they're supposed to do. Play outside, have fun. It's a fairly safe sport, as far as I know, and I really think that it would be an asset to the town. One of the things that really troubled me was, I drive home from work, I go right down Wells, and every day I'd see it, and it had fallen into disrepair. And it's a really highly visible location. And I think, you know, other teams, when they come in, play against our baseball team right on that adjacent field, they see this, and I think we should make a better impression. And I know some people commented about other sports that are in town. Sure, there's every kind of sport, and I can tell you, my kids played every sport coming down the pipe. I mean, I can attest to that. And they benefited from it. And I have nothing to answer any other sport, but I just think kids need options, they need things to do. And, you know, I really urge your support, you know, to vote in the affirmative for the tennis courts. And I don't know, with your permission, with the council's permission, my son sent me a few comments from Boston that he wanted me to convey. I don't know if you allow that. Is that okay? All right. The availability of the web tennis courts during my childhood and adolescent years helped my development in several ways. It was a place for me to develop physically, exercise, and become a healthy person. It was a place I spent time growing closer with my family and friends. My mom taught me tennis lessons on those courts, and my brother and I bonded over the course of many competitive games. As a community public space, it was one of my first exposures to the outside world. It was a destination for a bike ride outside of my neighborhood. It was a place where I met and interacted with strangers, community members, and new friends I would not have otherwise seen. It was free, easy, and spontaneous. There was no need for planning expensive equipment or excessive demands on my parents. It was reliable, and the door was always open. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Hello. I'm Eileen Candles. I live at 106 Win Mill Hill, and like many parents here tonight, I have children who play multiple sports and enjoy multiple sports in the town. Also, children who participate in some of the fields, many of which are less than ideal for sure. However, I'm here tonight in support of the tennis courts. The tennis courts absolutely at web should be refurbished. They are an eyesore. They are not a nice reflection on Weathersfield or on the character of the town that we're all very proud of. I don't know that I could've said it any better than the son's letter that was just read in regards to the fact that those tennis courts provide a free resource that is accessible and convenient in a community where people can walk from Emerson Williams area, walk from the web area, and be there together regardless of ages. And I think, you know, certainly, it sounds like the Emerson School needs your support. Certainly, there's other organizations that also need priorities. I don't envy your jobs at all because I'd be wanting to write a check to many organizations with money that I know doesn't freely come in. However, when there's something done that is done with such spirit and passion as demonstrated by a second grader looking for a way to supplement the resources of the town, the leadership that that demonstrates to me is the kind of character that I think this town is made of and likes to be known for. That's the kind of leadership that I certainly know I would be so proud of as parents, and I'm certainly proud of as a parent and a dear friend. But to take that and to not take advantage of that when you've been moving down this path and where choices have to be made, and you have to lean in one direction sometimes and another direction and other, I understand. But it certainly seems like there's been many compelling reasons that this is a really good decision and one that should have your support. Thank you for thinking of that and considering it really carefully, along with what would be very good for children who are active in sports, children who are not active in sports, those of us who are aging in years and need to somehow maintain this physical activity that we'd like to and that we certainly are inspired to. I think it's an excellent decision, and I hope it has your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. I think there was a gentleman in the blue that was trying to get up tight.
Thank you all. My name is Miguel Garcia. I'm actually a Portland resident, but I am the park and rec tennis instructor here for the Town of Weathersfield. I'd like to pass these out. If you don't mind, if you can grab one of those. So, there's three things I want to express to you on this list. Obviously, I'm here for the support of the web tennis courts. And that is, tennis is growing, support is needed at the local level, and the web tennis courts are primarily, you know, for the kids, although really for the family. I've been the Weathersfield tennis instructor for the last year for the park and rec. I'm also the tennis director at the Newington Tennis Weathersfield, so we do the indoor park and rec for the Town of Weathersfield. And I'm also a high school tennis coach for Mercy High School in Middletown. I've been coaching there for 22 seasons. And I'm also the Northern Connecticut USTA Junior Team Coordinator. So, I did have something to do with helping to also get that extra funding that we needed, the grant money that does not have to be paid back. Tennis is one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States today. With the new tenant under changes designated by the USTA, I gave you some of the brochure on that. Kids are starting younger than ever. They are playing matches sooner, the retention of kids in lesson programs is higher. Increased participation in junior team tennis has increased and has led high school team tennis seeing an increasing number of participants, and there is a court shortage here in Weathersfield. The obvious answer to that shortage is the construction going at the high school, but the reality is, there's a growing need to support kids tennis in Weathersfield. Teaching at Mill Woods this summer, the courts were always busy. I can't remember a moment when they were not being used during the weekday afternoons, when I'd have to go there and set up and actually probably kick some other players off, and they couldn't just go to Weathersfield High School or to web. I set up the courts appropriately for the age level that I was teaching at, which takes some time, there's no lines painted, I have to set up cones which the kids can trip over. But, you know, we made it work. And I had groups- Okay. And I had groups and kids as young as four years old starting. And, you know, that age, you know, that, you know, they're starting younger than ever, and, you know, they're growing into it. Okay. Every sport has been adapted at the youth level. Okay? Smaller fields, smaller equipment, smaller nets to improve competition. Tennis has been late on that trend. Okay? But the courts at Webb will have the new modified design that you see on those brochures, where they'll be painted for full court use. They'll have sixty-foot lines for the tenant-under kids, as well as eight-foot lines, I mean, thirty-six-foot court for the eight-and-under kids. So you could have four eight-and-under courts set up. And I've seen some schools even set up the small nets, including in my town in Portland, where the gym teacher actually sets the small nets and can have his gym class all playing tennis on two tennis courts, because they can set up these small little nets to teach the kids. With those small nets, they, you know, they're learning at a lot faster pace. Though, the kids will have courts to call their own. The, in the past, the average age of kids entering tennis lessons was twelve years old. That has come down recently to about ten. The correlation is that, that is the age when most kids in middle school or entering junior high, it is when they have been cut from their middle school or travel soccer teams. Okay? It is maybe something that they're looking, something new to do because maybe they're bored, or maybe they burned out from the sport, that they're geared to, everybody's playing year-round, every single sport now. The USTA has recognized this and has provided opportunities to help promote and grow the sport. As an example, and here's some local numbers, you know, to some surrounding towns here. Rocky Hill Park and Rec program three years ago had thirty-three participants in a single session. Last year, it climbed to seventy-eight. Middletown High School had to add a developmental team to their existing Varsity High School tennis team. Newington had thirty-five kids just on their women's tennis team. Topping that, Conard High School and Hall High School, which have a pay-to-play, but had, each one of them had over seventy girls participating in just their tennis teams. At Mercy, I doubled the size of my existing team and added a JV squad. And I still had to cut twenty girls that were interested in learning how to play tennis, that unfortunately don't have the opportunity. Eight years ago, there were two USTA junior team tennis teams in our area. They were from kids from Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, Newington, Berlin, all grouped together. We had to play down in southern Connecticut against Trumbull, Milford, Fairfield, and traveling down there. That was, that was eight years ago. We have grown that to twenty-five junior tennis teams in our local, just in the Hartford area alone. And that wasn't the, at all the private club level. Park and Rec teams played out of Bristol, Ellington, New Britain, Rocky Hill, Glastonbury, and Portland. The largest growth in participa, participation in the last two years has been from the twelve-and-under and ten-and-under age groups. Furthermore, I've been working with the USTA to introduce a three-year pilot program for competition in middle, in the middle school levels, levels from fifth to eighth grade. This will run through park and rec programs and will play to the middle school and junior high level. This will be a fall program when the tennis courts are usually not being used. They will be co-ed teams and hopefully run by the varsity tennis coaches and their high school, fellow high school students, players. It is my hope that Weathersfield can be a part of that, when, and the courts at Webb would be an essential part, as the kids would have easy access to those courts. When most middle school sports programs are limited in their offerings, I believe that tennis will give kids a choice, at least something that they can turn to when soccer and cross-country may be their only fall alternative in the school systems. Additionally, the kids of Weathersfield will not only be learning a new sport, but a sport they'll be able to play for the rest of their lives. I can tell you, we have three groups, I'm sorry, we have an adult, this morning, six courts of adults playing from nine-thirty to, nine-thirty to eleven. They come three times a week, and the average age is probably in their seventies. So we have a few players that are well into their eighties. So please support the repair of the Webb tennis courts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miguel. Yes, in the back.
Good evening. Mike Patrello from Brimfield Road, right in town. I keep hearing a lot of comments around Weathersfield about the beautification of Weathersfield. And we are a great town. We really are. And I'm hearing about the tennis thing, and we're hearing comments from parents that are coming in from other towns. Now, I've coached soccer for fifteen years, and Laura made a comment about the field that we have currently at, at Big Dean. And I have to say, now I'm coaching in another town, in North Haven, Connecticut, and I'm traveling around seeing other fields. They do not have the reputation that Weathersfield has. We want to compete with the Newingtons, the Glastonberrys, the Farmingtons, the Avons. I'm also on the Weathersfield soccer board. And to constantly get calls from different coaches to understand why other coaches are making our fields look so bad, I would ask, with the money that we have, and that's available, we do spend money to clean up the tennis courts. I do ask that we spend money to do the fields. Because ultimately, if we want to have this town to continue to grow and strive, we have a younger generation out there, and we want to bring people into this town. Okay? They're not going to come into this town with poor tennis courts, with poor soccer fields. So we want to make sure that we are Weathersfield, we should be Weathersfield, and live to our reputation. Because right now, we're falling behind. So I just wanted to say that quick. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Go, Mike Hurley.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Lee?
Lee Sekus, one seventeen Wells Road. I'm listening to all these comments about soccer and tennis in the, in the inside gymnasium at Emerson Williams. Those are all things are important, but to me, what's the priority list in this town? You might say roads, you might say police, you might say fire, you might say sidewalks, you might say safety, public health, library, education, of course. But I think sports, and I'm against sports. Sports is definitely, has replaced academics throughout this country. And I think academics is more important than athletics. Not that you don't learn from athletics, but I'd like to see, considering how money is limited, and you can't go so far, I think we have to just, let everybody know that priorities are priorities. So more popular, more people involved, great. Let them help, let them help foot the bill. No offense to them, but let them help foot the bill. And I'd, I wish them well. Obviously, athletics is important, but there's a lot of stuff you can do without much of dollar expense, you know. Just, okay, you can do cross-country, but that's other stuff. And I just say, we have to watch our dollars. And there's a good quote in a magazine I read the other day. I won't say what magazine it is, but it's also true. People love to throw money at problems. Everything except their debts. And that's what's happening more and more in this country. People going deeper and deeper in the red. And I would like to see our country, in our town, be a leader of trying to, you know, live within our means and not, you know, have everything and everything they want. Want tennis, great. I'd even donate fifty dollars to a tennis court. But our tax dollars have other priorities, I believe. That's what I want to say. I thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Further public comment for anyone this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll move on to council reports. Any council reports? Tony?
Since the last meeting, the Economic Development Commission is met. And they're working on the twenty-fifth Annual Salute to Business on December eleventh, which will be held at the Weathersfield Country Club. Staff is currently working on projects for the 2015 STEEP submission, which is due sometime in November. They will have their list together, ready for review by the committee at EDIC's next meeting. We've heard from the shopkeepers that they would like to see Holiday on Main extended in both directions, on Main Street when that comes time. And under EDIC as well, since we last met, we had two ribbon cuttings. One at the Itoichi Sushi and Ibachi Steakhouse on the Silas Dean, and another one at Dance Ten, where they expanded in their building and took over the whole building. So our storefronts are getting filled up, and that's great. Also, there was a meeting of the Weathersfield citizens with the Stability Advisory Commission. The high school Jets team came to the meeting to show the projects they're working on for the current year. These students have won national honors, took first place the past two years. And this year, they're working on more. And they've gotten to the point now where they're up to forty students in the program, which says a lot for it. So we've got a lot of smart kids going into that program. And the commission itself has a lot of vacancies to be filled. So if anyone's interested in that commission, if they could let Dolores know, and we can see about getting her added to it. Other group that I met with since was the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. Met since our last meeting. This past Sunday, they had a bus trip up to the Lock Haven in Holyoke, Mass. Left at ten in the morning and returned at five. I haven't seen them since, but it sounded like it was going to be a good time. On October twenty-third, they told us there's going to be a senior fair at Incarnation Church, if anybody wants to go to that. And on October thirty-first, the seniors will having, be having their Halloween party. The seniors will be wearing their costumes and interfacing with the children in the pre-K program this year. So that should be interesting. And social services will start accepting applications for energy assistance on November third. So seniors that are interested in that should call social services, set up an appointment for that, and bring the necessary documents with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate all that. Other council reports? Jeff?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, the insurance committee met last week. And on the healthcare, we're doing okay this year. You know, this time, the last several years, we were well below budget, which allowed us to freeze or actually reduce the amount that we allocated towards healthcare. So still nine months to go, but our agent of record warned us that if we kept, if we kept at this rate, you know, we'd be looking at a high, single-digit increase next year. And this, remember, this is like ten, twelve percent of our budget. So hopefully that reverses, but there's a couple of warning signs up.
Thank you, Jeff.
The, I did the, attended the building committee last Tuesday. Construction continues on. The gym floor is, should have arrived by now, so that will be going in. Essentially, the new additions are, are progressing on at, as scheduled. We do have a few change orders and some value engineering later in the agenda. But essentially, everything is, is progressing, progressing well, and, and it moves forward. Again, a lot of moving parts on that project. So things, every week, things pop up, but, but it's definitely a, it's a process, and it's ongoing. So, but nothing, nothing, nothing else going on, on that right now, that I know of.
That's good. Thank you, Steve. Quiet week. Any council comments? Mike?
I have one. Just, I know we'll probably resolve the tennis courts tonight, but on that issue of capital improvements, a few years ago, we had some forums on it to get people. I think it might have been Donna and Jeff that set up some forums on capital improvements. And we had a few sessions to bring residents in to see what they wanted done in the town. And that might not be a bad idea to kind of bring back, especially the whole capital improvements thing, you know, is kind of done in the back room. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of public input into the capital improvements, which goes to sports and many other things in town. So we probably should have maybe a forum or something to give people the opportunity to come forward to say what they would like to see done.
Thank you, Mike. Other comment? Any comments?
Yeah, I would just like to give a public acknowledgement to the work done by one of the town employees, Lisa Galoppo, who's the senior center director. And I think she's only been around less than a year, Kathy. And she's really enlivened the senior center. There was an open house last week, Tony and I attended, and a lot of activity, a lot of new activities for folks to attend, whether it's exercise, belly dancing, yoga, dancing to Broadway tunes. There's a singing group there. First time they had a trip in a long time was last weekend, and she's really energized the place. They had, their computer workshop was open. And for any seniors in town that are watching, they have great computer classes. And one of the nice things they did was they had three kids there from the high school who were explaining, and were explaining the latest in technology to the rest of us. And they were very good. They were very patient. And so it was a great intergenerational, you know, day, because the kids at the high school were interacting with a lot of seniors. A lot of seniors learned a lot about the, the latest gadgets and how to solve their problems with their iPads and their iPhones and everything. So she's really enlivened the place, and I just wanted to give her some recognition.
Thank you, Jerry. That was nice.
Do you mind if I speak about the...
Oh, no, go right ahead, Donna, please.
We received some information from our sister city of Nagayo in Nagasaki, Japan. And I'm just going to read you the short letter from Nubuko, who is in the planning division of the town hall. "Greetings from Nagayo, Nagasaki, Japan. It has been a year already since our delegation members visited your beautiful town. They all received warm welcome when they were in Weathersfield. Even after they returned, the town of Nagayo have received so much from our sister city. In January, Comstock Ferry and Company generously sent us many kinds of Weathersfield vegetable seeds, friendship seeds to us, including the Weathersfield red onion. We had farmers' help and some have, had some of the seeds planted and gave away those plants to our residents and town employees. Even in different climate and long-raining summer, many of them grew fine. Radish is one of our harvests, and we made salad with it. In April, we see, we received twenty copies of The Witch of Blackbird Pond from the Weathersfield Town Library. We now have a book reading club, and members enjoy reading and learning background history of Weathersfield and Connecticut in the sixteen hundreds. We are going to have a Weathersfield exhibition at our town hall lobby in November. As I was preparing for the exhibition, I noticed many beautiful maps. With great help of Ms. Kopecky of High Crest Elementary School, I got in touch with Mr. Lowman. We will be exhibiting maps he drew and the red onion, Mr. Red, as he called it. Enclosed are the town magazines in which we have been introducing our sister city to our town residents, town information, maps, and our favorite, Mikun, Tangerine Boy, and his family of goodies from Nagayo. Thank you very much for the friendship you have shown us." And I have the, one of the packets, and the town manager has the other, and I will be sharing with Comstock. They did put together a little bit of a brochure of the seeds that they grew successfully, and I think they were very happy to receive those.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate you doing that. Any other comments?
I just wanted to make mention of this past weekend's Cove Carnival. The Keene Foundation held their annual carnival again at Weathersfield Cove. Another successful weekend. And the, the entire foundation, led by Judy, just puts in so many hours to make that event successful for our community. And not only for Weathersfield residents, which I'm sure came out in full force. Many members of the council were there, volunteering their time, be it the food tent, or the beer tent, or checking people at the door, and that kind of thing. But many towns came in and were representative at the events, the food, the rides. It was just another terrific event. And, you know, I always see Judy at the event working tirelessly, who has given to our town and probably supported millions of dollars worth of funding privately for not only the foundation, but events, school events, our community center. And I just want to thank her and her entire foundation again for their effort. And I'm sure all of us that were there this weekend recognize their hard work. So I wanted to make sure I thank them. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. ProAct, which is the company that's doing the discount drug program, they finished the, the educational materials and the draft of the prescription card. They will mail a card to every town resident. So they'll get those in the next couple of weeks with instructions on how to use it. There'll be some press releases produced, so people can get the information out into the public for the website and for the newspapers. So within the next three to four weeks, you'll see that initiate. There's a, there'll be a toll-free number on the back of the card on how to use it. That way, if people have direct questions, they can call ProAct rather than the town, because we would just refer them to the company. So the next couple...
So the next couple, next few weeks, every town resident will get a card in the mail. And then there'll be some here at the Town Hall in case you lose one, or you have a family member that needs another one, or so forth. But they're free, and they'll be here at the Town Hall, and we'll probably have them some other places. You heard tonight about the Silas Dean Middle School. There was an issue with an area that, with the areas that were void of grass. We had some debris from some fill in those areas. We're gonna dig those out. Physical Service has been working with a contractor. They'll come in, dig those areas out, bring in some clean screen fill, and sod it, and it'll be ready for spring. If the council wants to go forward with a rehab project, we can do that for next fall. We can price it out and design it, but for right now, it's anticipated just, we'll dig those areas out and sod it for now and be ready for spring. That's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Paul?
Sure, Mike, go ahead. Because no one mentioned that. Mikey's Place 5K Run happened this, this weekend also, and it was a great event. A lot of people ran, and that has to also go along with the whole capital improvement thing. They keep that playground in nice shape down there. They do that, and they do a golf tournament during the year to keep that playground in great shape for the whole town.
Thank you, Mike.
Jeff, you've got a question for you on your manager report? On the, on the Dean Middle School field, I guess for the benefit of the people that are here that were talking about that, about that field, and that may be interested in other, you know, projects, how much of that field is actually gonna be dug up? Because it was just, the debris included like shards of glass and things that were dangerous, and that's why it was shut down. I don't think people really understood that. How much of that is gonna be replaced?
Mostly the areas around the goals and in the middle of the field where there's bare grass, where there's no grass.
So when it's gonna be sod, it's gonna be actually real sod, not just an overseed?
Right, it'll be sod.
Okay. And then is there, like, one resident and board member had referred to the soccer club being willing to donate up to thirty thousand towards irrigation or improvements. What would be the commitment, or is that something we need to work out to maintaining the fields going forward? I think that's one of the concerns that, you know, that they have.
Sure. And one of the hurdles we struggle with as a town now is that the state has changed the laws on the use of herbicides and pesticides and fertilizers in recreation fields, particularly ones directly adjacent to schools. So we can't go out there and do herbicides on those fields for weed control. And none of our fields are irrigated, or actually, very few are irrigated. We fixed DeChacchio's, or DeChico's, I'm sorry, DeChico's field with part of the renovation, but none of the other fields are irrigated, and they're all overused. They're substantially utilized. Most of our system was developed at a time when sports had one season. Now sports have three seasons, and they're all maxed out. So I think we do need to put some money in the fields, and there should be a priority given to those.
Yeah. The, so state law prevents or prohibits the application of pesticides, but how about fertilizers?
Well, we can do fertilizer, but without irrigation, it's tough to, to make that work.
Okay, so if irrigation is done, and the program's put in place, that would include fertilizing on a regular basis?
Sure.
And we could do that at all, at all the fields?
Yes. We fertilize now.
Soccer, baseball, yeah.
We fertilize now, but without irrigation and without the herbicides, it's tough to get the grass to grow.
Yeah. So I had a conversation with the Athletic Director, Mike Maltesi, about part of the reasons why, I think you've hit on it, that the fields are in such disrepair, and it's just because of the overuse. And I think going back to the, you know, the club's commitment to contributing to the fields, one of the reasons why a few years ago, there was a contribution of thirty-three thousand towards the lights was in anticipation of being able to use those more to relieve the stress on the playing fields and, and reduce the maintenance cost on that. So that's something I, I'm not sure, I think it's gonna go probably through Kathy's office or Marty on how we work that out, but that's something I think that we need to keep on the radar as well.
Keep what on the radar?
Keep, well, more use on Coton Field, especially at night, or in the afternoons when we can get more usage on it and relieve those grass fields.
Absolutely.
Unless we have a plan to start turfing, you know, other, other fields, we're gonna need to do, I think, our best to make sure those fields are, you know, in best condition we can.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you again. Dolores?
I have received over the weekend and today about eighteen emails, and I can read them for you. Stacy Lynch, "The Weathersfield Tennis, the web tennis courts are in desperate need of repair. They are an eyesore to our community and also reflect badly on the school grounds. I grew up playing on those courts. It's very sad to see what's happened to them. I would like to have the opportunity to play on those courts with my children. It would be nice for the neighborhood to have courts that they could walk to. Please let this project go through. It would mean so much to our local residents. It's embarrassing to see the state that they are in now and reflects badly on our town." Thank you. From Joe Demonte, "Please fix the web tennis court." From Elaine and David Paradise, "Dear councilors, we are writing to support the bid to renovate the web school tennis courts. These courts, as they stand, are an eyesore for the town. Also, it is clear that the tennis courts at Weathersfield High School will be offline for some time to come. Therefore, these courts at web are needed for recreational tennis by the citizens of our town. Please vote yes to support the renovation of the tennis courts at web school." From Nasuzair, "Please fix web tennis courts. This will be great for our kids and community. Thanks." From the Tugus family, "The council should go ahead with the tennis, the web tennis court renovation project. It is a great resource for the town, and tennis is a lifetime sport that families can enjoy together. My kids and I played on those courts for many years, and when they were open, they were always being used." Thank you. Thomas Dolan, "I would like to urge the Town Council to vote favorably for the repair of the web tennis courts. They are presently in poor condition and are needed in town with limited courts available for use. Thank you for your consideration." From Brad Strong, "Web tennis courts, while I agree the court is in state of disrepair, I believe the money can be better spent on repairing or rebuilding many of other fields in town. The soccer fields at Dean are more heavily used and in horrible shape. The fields at Millwoods, baseball and soccer, are also in bad shape and used much more often than tennis courts at web. As a coach and parent in town, it is embarrassing playing travel games at home. Our fields are in the worst shape of any town we play." From Anna in Yehun, "We would like to show support for the repair and/or renovation of the tennis courts at web school. It is long overdue, and they are desperately in need. Please vote to put money aside to take care of them." It is, thank you. Andrew Salick, "Regarding the proposal to renew the tennis courts at web, this is something the town needs to do. Supporting arguments on why this project should be approved by Town Council as follows. One, the courts at web have been in disrepair for years. It has been an absolute eyesore for residents and visitors alike. This does not exhibit a welcoming and flourishing town as Weathersfield should aim to do. Wells Road is a main thoroughfare, and so these destroyed courts are on display for all to see. Furthermore, when baseball games are being played, the tennis courts are an embarrassment, and they are embarrassing for parents and students of web as well. Two, there is a well-documented growing popularity of tennis. This past summer, public courts in all of the surrounding towns were packed. Weathersfield should support this growing movement, which helps residents exercise and stay fit, as well as socialize with other residents. And three, the eighteen thousand dollar grant from the USTA is a welcome gift, and the town should not let it slip away. The addition of, quote, 'jumpstart' lines to the courts will allow for young children to be introduced to the wonderful sport of tennis. Four, Weathersfield has a history of tennis success, with numerous state championship titles, both from the high school tennis teams as well as individual titles. This tennis culture needs to be supported. Please do what is right for the town of Weathersfield and proceed with the repair of courts." Catherine Lipka, "I am writing to support, in support of rebuilding the tennis courts at web Elementary School. Weathersfield has very few tennis courts in working condition, especially now with the high school renovation. The courts at web have been an eyesore for years. We now have a wonderful opportunity to improve the community with the USTA's financial support. I completely support the proposal to improve and rebuild the web tennis courts." I have one that has absolutely no comment on it. Don Bonavistuto, "I'm writing to ask for your approval of the new web tennis courts. My family and I enjoy playing tennis, but we have to go to Newington, Rocky Hill, and Glassonbury to do this. We would love to be able to ride our bikes to web and play tennis. We have tried to play recently, but they are very unsafe, and there were animal droppings all over the courts. Please pass this proposal for new web tennis courts. That would become a wonderful recreational facility for our community and very enjoyable to look at." From Steve Randall, "We requested the agenda item under B3A on October twentieth, requested by Jeff Bridges, the Town Manager. The item in agreement between the Town of Weathersfield and Metropolitan District Commission for the use of a boat for the Weathersfield Harbor Master. I am opposed to this agreement with the MDC. The town, in my opinion, does not require three special-use boats: fire department boat, police, police boat, and harbor master boat. In this age of shared services to reduce costs and maximize capital equipment, use the town should outfit the police and fire boat to permit harbor master use. Thus, only two boats are required: fire department boat slash headmaster, and two, the police boat, harbor master." Excuse me, that's harbor master in both of that. And this increases utilization with a net reduction in overall costs. Two boats continue to be, provide proper backup for emergency services, be it fire, police, or harbor master, or a combination. Glassonbury, Rocky Hill, and Cromwell have boats that can provide additional support. While the harbor master is performing his responsibilities, that boat receives regular operation, which is good. The harbor master is certainly well-qualified to operate either boat, and emergency response is actually improved as one boat is already launched, while the second boat is, is still needs to be staffed, fire, police, or, and launched. In addition, there is a potential for conflict of interest between the town and the MDC. Reference the MDC history of releasing, of releases into the Cove and the extensive work the MDC is performing throughout the town." From Camille Moglenicki, "I strongly urge you to please move forward with the web tennis courts. Tennis is alive and well in Weathersfield. Trying to get a court time at the high school prior to the demolition of the courts and at Millwoods is virtually impossible, especially during peak times. The great thing about tennis is that it appeals to all age levels. In fact, we often see more adults using the courts than kids. Unlike other sports that the town puts a great deal of money and time into, tennis is for everyone and at any level. It is not exclusionary. Moving forward with this project is good for Weathersfield. It will have a positive effect on our property values as well, improving the image of the town in general. All three of my girls play tennis and have USTA rankings. They are forever trying to find courts available, court availabilities, especially this past summer, when there were no courts at the high school. Please move ahead and with this, with this project. It will be worth it on every level." From Peter Nowher, "I support the tennis courts." From Kathleen Nowher, "I support the web tennis courts." From Duke Nowher, "I support the web tennis courts." From Sophia Nowher, "I support the web tennis courts." From Margaret and Larry Orkins, "We totally support all the efforts to refurbish the tennis courts. They have been in disrepair and unusable for years. There are numerous families in the surrounding neighborhoods who have one or more members who play tennis and who would have used those courts had they been proper, in proper condition. In addition, when a facility is available, there are always people who will develop an interest in a sport because they have access to that facility. Please consider funding these repairs so that future generations of Weathersfield residents will be able to enjoy the great sports." That's, those are the only things I received. The other comment is that we have an election coming up, and as the Town Court...
Is there a letter on, on the table, too?
In addition to this, I thought they were all, I had them all. What, whose letter is that?
Tom Landers and David Paul.
I don't have one of those.
Okay. She passed the papers, so she can read them for the record, I guess.
"Weathersfield Town Council, this letter is written in regards to the proposed building slash reconstruction of two new tennis courts at web school in 2015. We understand that the proposed budget for this work is approximately one hundred and forty-four thousand, supported in part by a ten, eighteen thousand dollar grant by the USTA, and is being spearheaded in part by a group of web parents who are interested in having neighborhood courts. An additional reason for this proposed capital expense item is to expand access to public courts in Weathersfield at a time when the high school renovation has removed eight courts from the total town stock of fourteen public courts. Eight at high school, four at Millwoods, and two at Hamner. The town's recreational program has purportedly reported calls from tennis players regarding the status of additional public court availability during the high school renovation. First, it's important to determine why this proposal is being forwarded. One should ask whether, in a supply-demand equation, there are enough tennis players in town to justify the expense. In reconditioning the web tennis courts is being done to address the longer-term problem of lack of supply of courts in Weathersfield, including high school courts, and the ultimate goal is building up Weathersfield tennis facilities. Then it makes more sense to look into adding additional courts at Millwoods, not web, excuse me. Four additional courts north of the current Millwoods courts could be added thereby, creating a true tennis center in place of the web school proposal. Surrounding towns such as Newington, West Harford, Farmington, and other communities have recently built similar public tennis centers and enjoy thriving junior and adult tennis programs, as well as other town recreational tennis programs. From a taxpayer perspective, the town should explore adding courts at Millwoods if there was a demand for more tennis courts in town. This would make town recreational programs for adults and children stronger. Refurbishing the two courts at web would really only serve a small percentage of residents in the web area. If taxpayer money is spent on tennis courts, the town should explore an option that improves the current town facility and is a benefit to all town residents, as all town residents are paying for it." Number two, if there are not enough long-term shortage of public tennis courts at present, given current demand, and once the high school courts are brought back online in 2017, then the town will likely have enough courts to meet town tennis demand. Therefore, the lack of tennis town courts is therefore a short-term problem for the town, and refurbishing two courts would be an unnecessary expense for the town. To address the temporary lack of supply while the eight high school courts are offline, otherwise, we have enough courts in town and don't need to add more. Pine Acres Swim and Tennis Club, located in Weathersfield, is able to accommodate displaced Weathersfield tennis players over the next two years until the high school courts come back online. Being only a two-year issue, the short-term lack of demand could better be addressed with using Pine Acres as a temporary solution, and the money earmarked for this project spent elsewhere or saved. If the town sees the benefit of using a Pine Acres solution, Pine Acres will work with the town to develop a mutually beneficial temporary arrangement. As longtime tennis players in town, we do ask whether the demand-supply mismatch is such that demands the construction of two additional public courts. Once the high school courts are brought back online in 2017, the town will likely have enough courts to meet tennis demand. From our experience, the Hamner courts are underutilized, and in our experience, it is rare, outside of school team use, to see all eight Weathersfield High School, Weathersfield High Courts occupied at any one time. The Millwoods courts do face a lot of demand and can fill up, though this is partially attributable to the fact that they are lighted. In our opinion, however, that, there doesn't appear to be a long-term shortage of public tennis courts at present, given current demand. If the council decides that adding additional public courts is needed, we do not feel that reconstituting the courts at web is the best idea, and a Millwoods option be considered. The court at web has been offline for many years, only recently since the high school courts have gone online is there a small need for these courts. While the courts are an eyesore, refurbishing may not be the best or most cost-effective solution for taxpayers of town. Perhaps there is a better use of this tennis court real estate at web. If the funds earmarked for this project are for capital improvements, one should ask whether, in, in a supply-demand equation, there are enough tennis players in town to justify the expense. If there is enough tennis demand, a Millwoods expansion should be considered a first option for the benefit of the overall town." for the benefit of the overall town. If there is not enough demand for more tennis courts, perhaps this money earmarked for capital improvement is better spent on town recreational programs where more citizens participate. Tom Landers and David Paul are longtime tennis players, town residents, and board members of the Pine Acres Tennis Club. A nonprofit, private tennis and swim facility located at 196 Western Boulevard in Weathersfield. We were approached by one of the town council members regarding allowing tennis players to use the eight courts at Pine Acres over the next two years to alleviate temporary lack of supply, given the aforementioned high school renovation. We presented this option to the Pine Acres Board, and Pine Acres will work with the town to come up with a temporary solution. Tom Landers and David Paul.
Thank you, Dolores, for reading that.
Can you read those all again, Dolores?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna move on to council action. B1A, acceptance of resignations. There are none, as I'm aware of. We'll move to appointments to boards. Deputy Mayor.
Motion to appoint to the Design Review Advisory Committee, Fladoric Hema, 136 Munce Road, from 10/20/2014 to 1/1/2017. To the Library Board of Directors, Peter DeNegre, 527 Main Street, from 10/20/2014 to 6/30/2016. And to the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, James Harlbert, 25 Mountain Laurel Drive, from 10/20/2014 to 6/30/2016.
Have a second? Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. B1C, resolution approving agreement between the Town of Weathersfield and Department of Homeland Security.
Motion to approve the agreement with the Department of Homeland Security for financial assistance.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ask Mike Turner, the town's emergency management director, to go over this one.
Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, the Homeland Security Grant Program is a program that came about in 2010, and basically what it was, was a vehicle to funnel federal funds into the region for essentially a lot of equipment, a lot of training that has been done. And since 2010, we have signed a memorandum, we, the Town of Weathersfield, have signed an agreement between Dennis, the town, and CROG, which is our Capital Region Council of Governments, to basically funnel any money that would have been directly received by the town into CROG and have CROG and the panel, which is a Capital Region Emergency Planning Commission, which we are a member of, administer and basically determine the best location to spend that money. So what we're asking to do is continue, even though the federal funds are slowing down a little bit, we're asking to continue on with that same path. And again, we've done this every year since 2010.
Questions for Mike from the council?
I just, I think this is a really good program. We have been able to take advantage of training opportunities and have participated not only in a drill here in the Operations Center, but in Hartford. And mutually beneficial because the scenario was such that it was a river-based tragedy or incident that involved multiple communities and how you would deal with that with other simultaneous things happening on highways and around other surrounding communities that really taps into different resources. And so I think it's a very good way to show regional cooperation, and we have learned to work more cooperatively in conjunction with our regional neighbors, and I think it's a good, it really is a good program.
Absolutely. Thanks, Don. Any other comments or concerns? Go straight forward. We have a motion and second in front of us for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We are moving on to unfinished business. B2A, reconstruction of the tennis courts.
Motion to accept the bid from RS Site and Supports LLC for $131,861.30 for the replacement of the tennis courts at Webb Elementary School.
Second.
Motion, a second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This was tabled at the last meeting with the request for additional information on the height of the fencing, the costs of the renovation of the basketball courts at Emerson Williams and Charles Wright, which Mr. Turner put together in a memo, and would be about $40,000 each. There's some talk about the fencing. Mike, you want to talk about the fencing?
Sure. We looked into the requirements of what Little League requires for protective fencing, and essentially, they set a 60-foot threshold, if you will, from the edge of the ball field as what they consider the safe zone, that there really should be nothing in there and anything beyond that would be protected. The closest corner of the tennis courts is about 90 feet away from home plate, and the fence that we're proposing is 10-foot high. In talking with Kathy, what it would seem to be is that, obviously, a 10-foot-high fence would protect any of the players on the tennis courts from a line-drive-type foul ball. What it wouldn't protect in would be a high pop fly ball, a foul ball. And whether the fence was 15 feet or 20 feet, in all likelihood, that fence wouldn't protect it. But we did do some cost estimates to raise the fence. The next normal level was a 12-foot, and then we went up to 16-foot. The thing that works against us in raising that fence on the west side of the court is that that's also where AT&amp;T has their service connection box and a lot of underground conduits and what have you. With obviously a taller fence, you need much sturdier supports to be engineered, deeper footings, taller and larger poles, and quite honestly, just a different type of fabric. So it's something that would have to be specially made, so.
Other discussion on the topic?
Just a comment. I think we've had some good discussion about the topic, and I think the important piece about that discussion is being able to look at potential alternatives that could help save the town money. Just because we've always done something the same way shouldn't preclude us in looking at other ways to provide a desired service and have that discussion. And I, and on the same topic, what Counselor Hurley talked about in regards to capital improvements, I think that is a good suggestion and really does lead into this kind of a project with having the public come out, and it's been very helpful to have the public here tonight to listen to their feedback. But I think it's helpful to look into alternatives because public-private partnerships, we have experienced in the past, and they have been successful.
Thank you. Tony?
I just want to say, I've listened to everybody's comments tonight on capital projects, especially park-and-rec ones. Every year, the various departments submit to the Capital Improvement Committee their list of what they'd like to see accomplished, and their list is far greater in cost than money that becomes available. And for park-and-rec, their list is first reviewed by the Park-and-Rec Board, and they prioritize what they want to do first. And, you know, in the year that this came up, the tennis court was their first request. And I think we have to go on the advice of the group that really knows the sports needs of the town, the Park-and-Rec Board, and their advice to give them what they want and their priority. And that's what came forward to the Capital Improvement Committee, who looks at all the requests and takes them based on the recommendations from the departments and other commissions. So I will be voting in favor of these tennis courts.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. This weekend, I went through the reasons for and against doing these courts, and I'm not going to read the whole letter like we made Dolores do, but there are seven points that I really want to make on this. First of all, this project has been properly vetted through the Capital Improvements Committee and was included in our 1314 capital budget by the council, and it was included by a 7-2 vote. There are, these are the only tennis courts on the west side of town. Kids without cars who live in the neighborhoods off Golf Road, Willow Street, Cedar Street, and Ridge Road will need to ride their bikes or walk to Millwoods or the high school when those courts become available to play tennis if these courts aren't brought online, or they're going to have to depend on somebody with a car. The town is short tennis courts, with these two offline and the six at the high school unavailable for at least the next two years. We only have four at Millwoods and two at Stillman, and the Millwoods Courts had waiting lines for much of the summer. 14% of the cost of this renovation was picked up through USTA private grants. Kathy and her staff has done a very good job working to get that grant money. I don't want to give it up. These courts are more costly than the original estimate, but they also are better quality with 20-year warranties, and we have seen courts deteriorate far faster than that in town. In the nine years I've been on the town council, we've worked in a bipartisan manner to enhance recreational opportunities in town. We've installed lights at the high school football field, added a skate park, a dog park, a lighted Little League field in Millwoods, and have agreed to replace antiquated docks at the Cove. We have subsidized play-scape construction. We have included a new gym at the high school. We have never decided to eliminate recreational facilities in town, and I don't think we should start now. We still need to spend money at Webb regardless. The broken fencing, unplayable courts, and tree stumps there now represent one of the most unsightly public properties in Weathersfield, and we need to address it, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
I just wanted to comment on the estimates, I mean, that we've been receiving on several projects, this being one of them, $90,000, and then it comes in at 140. So, and now I think it's down to, they got it down to 131. But I'd just like to maybe see if we can get some better estimating done around these things, and then we won't have as much confusion when it does come to a vote.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments? Stoffey?
Thank you. So, by the, by the public comment tonight, and everybody has come out, you know, it's obvious that there's a lot of worthy projects in town that are competing for dollars, and so it's a, that's our challenge as a council, determining how we take taxpayer money and fund certain projects. That's why, to me, I think it's so important that we fully explore other options, some of which have come up tonight. And sometimes, we need to change our plans, even though we are going down a path. We've changed CIP recommendations in the past, so this would be no different if this is what the council decides, especially when it's necessary, when necessary, when there's viable alternatives. So, the option that's been presented, and I think a lot of the public comments may have been different if they understood that there was a proposal from Pine Acres in front of us or presented tonight through a letter, that the Pine Acres Courts were a viable option. In fact, a lot of people here, our members of Pine Acres are on the board, so the board members probably knew, but the ones that didn't, and some that I've spoken to prior to tonight, didn't even realize that. So, when that comes before us, I think we have to kind of vet that, and I don't think we fully did, to Counselor Kotkin's remarks, before, before we actually spend taxpayer money on this. And I'm sure, you know, Miguel Garcia, if he's still here, I think I see him in the back. So if he knew that there were eight courts going to be available instead of two, I'm sure he would come tell us that. That would serve more kids, we'd have more courts, and it would serve a short-term problem. Then what we could do is wait until these tennis courts at the high school are redone, and then we can really gauge what the demand is for them. And then, if we see that there is demand, then there's no reason why we shouldn't support that, those tennis courts at Webb or elsewhere, including, you know, Millwoods, like has been brought up. And for Michael Garcia's benefit too, the USTA grant, my understanding is that we won't necessarily lose it, it could be repurposed to other tennis courts. And that's what I've been told, so unless I see something differently, I don't think we'll lose that. I just feel like we're kind of blindly spending without looking at viable alternatives. And if, you know, the letter that came from Tom Landers and Dave Paul referred to a council member, that happened to be me that met with them, and I feel like if that didn't happen, we wouldn't even be talking about possible alternatives for spending taxpayer money. Pine Acres Board approved working with the town, yet we're still prepared to vote to spend the money without even seeing whether that's a viable alternative. The Newington Tennis Center is certainly an option. We haven't, you know, talked to them. Again, this would be a short-term solution until we can find out whether the high school courts, when they become online, will meet the current demand. So I think that's really all I've got to say on that, unless somebody else has something.
Any other comments, Stephen?
For all the reasons stated by Jeff, certainly the folks that have spoken, I am firmly in support of the tennis courts at Webb. That said, that doesn't mean that I'm not in favor of the soccer fields. Certainly, the field at Dean is not just for soccer, it's the school's gym, that's where they have their gym, so it's an important project, so that's a project that I also support and look forward to working with folks on trying to resolve. I do think that's important as well. But with regard to the tennis courts, I think it is a, it is a facility that can be used by all ages. Everyone's talked about it tonight. I support recreational fields, and with regard to the safety issues, as I said the last meeting, we can't live in a world where we can make every recreational facility completely safe. We have to invest in recreation in town, and I think it's well worth it, and I support this project.
Mike?
Thank you, Paul. Well, I agree with many of the people and Jeff as well, when they say that the courts are an eyesore and that Wells Road is a major thoroughfare through our town, and it is, you know, a black eye on the community to have those courts seen, you know, by people who are driving up and down Wells Road. I do like the proposal or the alternative that Stoffey had mentioned, at least from this side of the aisle, looking at a, an alternative to just simply spending $131,000 on new courts. You know, Stoffey had reached out to a group here in our town that provide a service. They have eight courts at Pine Acres, and while ultimately I believe I'll support the renovation to the Webb courts, I do commend Stoffey for reaching out and looking at least for an alternative rather than just simply spending money or more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jerry?
For me, the issue is, this has been on the radar screen for a while, and the staff has recommended it. The process has been vetted through the Recreation, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, it's gone through the CIP process. We have a lot of citizen participation on these committees, and if I was a member of these committees and spent hours going over these proposals and come up with a viable plan and basically follow the process, and then it gets now here at the last minute to have it overturned, but I'd be feeling, why do I even bother to try and do anything in Weathersfield? Alternatives are great, but when there's a process and it's been going on, I would say any CIP project, and Tony, you can correct me, is probably on the radar screen at least five years before it percolates up this high. So we're talking a long period of time when suggestions could have been made for other things or whatever, but it's here now. We have an opportunity. It is an eyesore. I drive by there. When you come into town on Wells Road, you look over at this clump of what used to be trees, now they're tree stumps, rusty fence, the whole thing is a mess. And I think it's time to move on, and, you know, I understand the fields, the soccer field is a problem at Dean, Dean Middle School, but this, I think, takes priority right now, and the town, according to the manager, sounds like we have a plan to address that issue. So I would support this proposal.
Jeff, go ahead.
Paul, I would just add that the, as one of the speakers tonight mentioned, these courts could be available- courts could be available basically March through November if you have a reasonably sunny, warm day, because you don't, it's, you don't have trees overhanging, the courts can warm up, you can play on them. You know, I played at the high school in March, I played at the high school in November on sunny, sunny days. I also played at Pine Acres for eighteen summers, two or three times a week, and once you got past Labor Day, if the courts got wet, if you think, there's a lot of trees around them, and as the sun gets, the angle of the sun gets lower, it's tough for those courts to dry out. So, it's really, they're phenomenal courts, I mean, the clay and the tartaro are excellent courts, but they don't provide the, that eight-month, potentially eight-month use that, that the hard courts provide. Those, the baselines on the south side of the courts, once you get much past Labor Day, they're just, it's tough for them to dry out, because it's, it's Pine Acres, there's a lot of pine trees, and it's a beautiful spot, but it doesn't provide you with the eight-month use that, that the harder, the hard courts around town provide you with.
I think the reality is, though, Jeff, that tennis players, most of them go indoors in the winter, so they're not going to be looking for that sunny day in December to be playing. And, and if we start the project now, whether it's done or not, it's still going to require the dismantling and removal of what's there. So, by doing this in a step-by-step process, we're not really harming anything, because it's not going to start again until, you know, the springtime. So, that would give time to at least vet these other options and, and let people decide, you know, where they'd want to play.
Any other comments?
I want to thank the public that came out this evening to speak on the topic. As is always the case, whenever we have a topic that comes up that garners a little bit of public attention, we get a good turnout, which is always helpful for us when we make decisions, to, to see that the public is, A, listening, paying attention, following the story, and participating. All of us, I think, as elected officials, try to make decisions with the, the public's interest in mind, and as evidenced by tonight, although it was pretty dominantly a supportive public with respect to the tennis courts, there's also competing interests that we all know. I've sat in on several of the CIP meetings over the years and watched that group in action, and they represent, I think, a very, very good cross-section of our residents who understand the interest of all of the sports that compete in our, our community. All of us know that soccer, for example, is extremely popular in Weathersfield, it's got a wonderful reputation, and we have been working over the last ten years to improve our fields, to address some of the concerns that have surfaced on those fields, and we'll continue to do that. But one of the things I think that's very important for me, as one counselor who has sat on the council for almost ten years, is the CIP process, in my mind, if we are to properly respect it and watching it in action, as evidenced, again, by some of the commentary this evening, our, our community that's here tonight is representing multiple interests. CIP listens to multiple interests when it makes those choices, and so the process of arriving at a project that surfaces to the top is something that I'm really aware of and want to, want to put a lot of respect to the fact that that kind of thoughtful analysis, the feedback from the community that participates, to Donna and I think Mike Hurley's point about the forum, we know from talking with our residents, and all of us that are involved with sports throughout town, talk to our residents regularly, and I think it is very prudent for us to offer communication to residents to come out and look at our CIP list. I believe our CIP list has over a hundred projects on it in various levels of priority. And so, this one has been, as Jerry said, surfacing for quite some time, and we have finally got our arms around it, made a commitment, we voted on it as a council in the budget process this past spring to support it. It's, in my opinion, very important to finally get that one done and off the list now that it's there. It does not mean that we do not hear or understand the concerns about soccer fields, basketball courts, floors over at Emerson Williams, like Martin's referring to, all of those projects are on our screen and being discussed as a regular need. So, we might have maybe a million-two in capital improvement project money awarded each year, and there's probably twenty million in projects that are sitting there, and probably Tony could talk to that, but at the end of the day, I obviously want to support this project getting done. I supported it during the budget process in the spring, as did most of our counselors, and I'm sure that we'll support it this evening, and hopefully, hopefully we'll get to it and get it done, and Mike can get the contract started, so we can get this one back in play for the spring. Pragmatically for me, too, I would say that I think the demand is much greater than simply accommodating the tennis courts that are offline over at the high school. I also, while I understand the thought process of looking at an alternative with a private facility, I believe that came up before, a couple of years ago, and didn't receive wide support primarily because whatever proposal might surface would require, I think, some funding into a private facility from the town funds, which is not a capital source of dollars, which would be a real concern for us getting that approved, so I don't know that that would have much viability, although I appreciate the Chester. So, we have a motion and a second to support this project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Let's do a count since.
Well, call.
Dolores, not.
Jeff, you want to do?
Yeah, I'll do it. Martino?
Aye.
Kotkin?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Hammond?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Manousis?
No.
And Hurley?
Aye.
Passes seven to two.
Thank you. And Mike, thank you, Mike, for the indulgence. I know you also talked to the contractors, so hopefully that is still online and good to go. And thank you again to the public for coming out on both sides and thoughts on it this evening. Appreciate it. Moving on to other business. B three A, agreement with the Metropolitan District.
Mayor, point of personal privilege here. I see the family out there that started all this, and there's several young children, young students in the school system that initiated the project and the concern, and maybe we could just acknowledge them and thank them for their work.
Thank you, Jerry. And thank you again. Do you have a motion on three A? Tony?
Motion to approve an agreement between the town of Weathersfield and the Metropolitan District Commission for the use of a boat for the Harbor Master, conditioned on a final acceptance of an agreement by the town attorney.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The boat that we had had the Harbor Master using, it was originally the fire department's boat forty years ago, and after forty years of use by our department, and then we loaned it to other towns, it came back to us, and about ten years ago, we allowed the Harbor Master to use it for their function. It has outlived its useful life, the motor shot, and it did sink, and it's not co-worthy at this point, and rather than buy another boat, the MDC has graciously offered to loan us one, subject to their needs coming first, of course. So, there's a proposed agreement in the packet, we're still working out the details with the lawyers, but the general framework is there. Our costs, we'll have to insure it, and we'll provide fuel and, and maintenance and so forth, like we did with the other boat, but we won't have to buy another one.
Questions about this, this proposal from Council? Tony?
Just a couple of questions. First one, Jeff, on the sixty-three dollars for insurance. Wouldn't the old boat have been covered by our insurance policy, and would this one just fall over in place of it if the other one's being disposed of?
Perhaps. This one's newer, so it's probably got a higher value than the other boat.
Any other question? I would assume with a twenty-year-old boat with a, I believe it was a two thousand and seven motor on it, our repair cost per year should be dramatically reduced, our repair cost?
I would anticipate spending less time keeping the sea-worthy than we spent on the other one. But, but the downside is the motor on the other one was only about five years old.
Okay. When it went into the water?
Yeah, when it became submersible.
Oops. Council Hurley?
I know there was a writer, a letter read into, by Dolores, and I believe it was trying to repurpose, like the police and the fire, and I believe, maybe you could say it a little better, that they are for different purposes and for public safety.
They are, and those boats each carry specialized equipment for the police department or the fire department, and they have particular rules on their use, there has to be multiple people on the boat with certain certifications and so forth, so it's really not a good mix to allow someone who's really not an agent of the town to use those boats, particularly with those, that kind of equipment on board.
Yeah, I respond back to him too, Mike, with some of that, I'm sure you will too, Jeff, so. Any other comments or concerns? I want to thank the MDC for the offer, I know there were some folks that were involved with working behind the scenes for that, so hopefully it'll be helpful for the foreseeable future. We have a motion and a second in favor, in, in front of us, rather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. B three A.
Motion to approve the write-off of five thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars of taxes from the nineteen ninety-eight grant list, which are uncollectible.
Second.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, ask Tax Collector Marlene Desargents to go over this with you.
How you doing, Marlene?
Basically, there are just thirteen lots that were left on the grant list that we've tried every aspect. The individuals are deceased, family members don't want them, so there isn't, wasn't really any tools left for me to collect on these.
Thank you. I want to mention, I know we did this last year, and the number keeps going down, and the other stuff keeps going the right way. I mean, you've done incredible work over the last several years. Marlene, I know we mentioned it, and it bears mentioning again, our collection rate continues to exceed our budgeted amount, and I think in large part due to your efforts, the efforts of your office, the Herculean calls, chasing, and all the hard work that you do, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and I'm sure the taxpayers who pay their bills religiously appreciate that you don't leave any stone unturned, so I want to make sure we mention that.
Thank you.
Any thoughts, concerns? We have a motion, a second in front of us to support this. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you. Can I?
Motion to approve the purchase of the replacement pumps for the, for Construction Services of New England, for seventy-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I know Kathy's here for that as well, too, Jeff.
Yes, and I'll let Kathy talk about this.
The pool pumps.
Pool pumps.
Pool pumps. Say that fast.
Good evening. These are the pumps for the Willard Pool filter operation. We have three pools there, so it's a series of pumps for our filter operation, and it's also the replacement of the waiting pool filter operation. So, it's, it's both pieces, and it will complete, we've been phasing in the replacement of the whole filter operation at Willard Pool, and this will actually complete that process.
This was in the CIP, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This was, came in in multiple different packages through CIP, and now we just kind of lumped several projects together for the purpose of mobilization and just easy getting it done, so.
Questions on this project? Mike Hurley?
Could you just, I mean, the last filters and pumps that were there, how long did they last approximately?
Easy fifteen to twenty years. The, the staff maintains those pumps and the filters pretty well.
Jeff?
Kathy, it seems like, maybe this is what you were discussing, but it seems like we've been doing work at Willard for a while. Maybe you could just talk about all the work we've done over the last five or six years, because it seems like we've done a lot there, and are we sort of done, or is there, are there more things there that you still need to get done that you'll be going back to capital improvements for? I don't even know the status of the bath houses or anything like that.
Two different, we have the filter operation is like one piece, and then the bath house is a different piece. The filter operation has been the key areas we've been working on probably for the past five years. We started with the replacement of the big filter tanks. We used to have three tanks, we went down to two tanks, and I should preface all this with, all of this improvements have been, with all the upgraded equipment, it's really been a, a good savings with our utility costs and energy, all for that, that purpose. So, we started with the tanks, because they were, had almost failed. Actually, one of them had failed, and they were all the same age, so we figured they were all going to go. Those were replaced. We then replaced all the controllers for each of the filter tanks that would then do all electronically, all the chemical additions, monitor the pool, that was all done as a, an upgrade, where we can actually, I'm going to use an old world, dial in now to the system through a telephone line that's out there and actually monitor it from the office, so we can spot any, any issues that might arise, whereas before it needed a spot check at the pool to notice something. And now we're doing, now we're doing the filter, the, the pumps themselves that go to each of the filter tanks. So, it's, it's been, but it's taken a while, just based on the years, to get all that accomplished.
Okay. All right. And the ba-
And the bath house, that is still identified in capital improvements. We always look at the roof, we look at the walls, those are still in our program for capital improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions, concerns for Kathy? Very good. We have a motion and a second forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Award of a bid for Tremco?
Motion to award a contract to Tremco Weatherproofing Technologies for Roof Services per the attached agreement for the term July one, twenty fourteen, through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'll ask Mike to come up. Tremco's been part of our CIP program and roof maintenance program for, I'll go on, well, six years, five years? How long?
It, it actually, it's about eight years. The first, the first time through, we, we bid it twice, and then the, the current version we're working on, we bid it with a five-year term. It was something that the CIP AC Committee at the time recommended, that we could probably get a better price if we locked someone in for a longer term, which we did, so what we're asking for is recommendation to award, this is year five of the five-year term, so we will put this back out to bid for next year's CIP.
Mike, the, just for the benefit of those that have paid attention to this over the years, they, they have created a database over those years on all the roofs in town, all of our public buildings, and, and as a result of it, if I recall, we have successfully been able to maintain roofs without major maintenance, because they've preemptively been able to assess where we're at, and this contract covers continued evaluation of that database and minor maintenance.
That, that's correct. We, we used to get hit with all of the various departments and, you know, sports groups and what have you, seeking CIP funds, and then all of a sudden, physical services would come in and say, okay, that's good, but we need four hundred thousand dollars because this roof just failed, that type of thing, and it just blew all of the schedules all out of the water. This, this now working, we're, we're much more proactive now, we have a twenty-four-hour leak response with, with Tremco, they're assisting us with our capital planning so that we have the long-range lookout for when, when roofs are going to be due, so we can plan and our CIP to, to look forward to these. And as you suggest, they are, they have offered some alternative renovation-type work to keep these roofs, you know, going much longer than, than, than they normally would have.
And I think if I recall, it might have been last year or the year before, you, you really pointed to that this was a far more cost-effective program than what you described before, the ad, sort of ad hoc on the fly thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Questions? Council? Tony?
Just a comment, this group, because I've watched them over the years, and besides doing their inspection, when they go up there on the roofs, if there's minor repairs that are needed, they take care of them right away on the spot, it's part of their contract, and that in the long run has saved us from having major problems down the road and, you know, unnecessary immediate repairs that have to be done, or replacements, because things that get done, when it was a little thing, it grew into a monster, so they've done well for us over the past five year, eight years.
Thanks, Tony. Mike Brown? I just had a quick question, looking at the cost, fifty-five thousand, is that for just one year, or is that?
That's one, the one year, yes.
Okay, it's not the life of the five?
Correct.
Okay.
It used to be up in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range, but with the five-year term, they reduced it down to fifty-five.
And then they're going out to bid again to June of next year?
Yes.
Fifty? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We have a motion and a second in front of us for the approval of this contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And finally.
Motion to approve the value engineering reductions to urban contractors in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars, and sixty thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and Mackenzie Service Corp. in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-
Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And finally-
Motion to approve the value engineering reductions to urban contractors, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars, and sixty thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and Mackenzie Service Corp., in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and to approve a change order for additional temporary walls for G Donovan Associates, in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Jeff? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The VE process continues. This is the flooring portion of it, along with a small piece on Mackenzie, and then we had, due to the phasing and some of the other work, we had to add some temporary walls to Phase One, to get us through, and that added, that required the change order. So, Mike, just get some details, if you have any further questions.
Mike, the temporary walls, I assume, were near the gym area in the high school?
These, these are, these are walls that the contractor is being required by ONG to separate essentially the construction areas from the children. And, the base contract carried two thousand square foot allowance of walls. This is an additional forty-five hundred square feet of walls, because we ended up doing the entire guidance and administration wing, it just required, you know, a bit more phasing, if you will.
And that's the, that's the only increase, the others are reductions-
That's correct.
Reflecting-
Yeah, right. That's the, that's the increase that you, you ended up in.
Questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thanks. Pretty straightforward. We have a motion, a second, for these change orders and value engineering. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Need to add one thing on the high school project.
Go ahead.
As you know, we're looking at, we've got that tank, the original tank, that still has to be remediated. DEP is asking us to use all practical speed to get that done. We're about to put an RFP out to companies on the state's list of approved contractors to do that kind of work, so we may, and we don't have a scheduled meeting now until late November, so we may ask at some point for a special meeting to approve that contract to get that done, so just be aware of that over the next three weeks or so.
Thank you, Jeff. We have an ordinance resolution for introduction for the Red Cross, and approval of minutes, item six. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any changes, additions, modifications?
One, this was the meeting that the tennis courts were-
Tabled.
Were tabled.
Correct.
I didn't see any comments in here from mine. It's a vast left-wing conspiracy.
What?
Left or right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So, I didn't see any of my comments in the, in the minutes. And you had a lot. Just to let you know.
Maybe she had to, maybe she attributed them to somebody else. I'll have to check.
Well, if you can-
You mean on the tennis court?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, mostly on the tennis court.
Yeah, it was on the table.
Specifically to the tennis courts. I didn't see any of it.
We can approve them, subject to you just adding that in when you figure it out.
That's good. Any other comments, changes? We have a motion to approve the modification, assuming we locate, stop these comments and add them in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Jerry. Public comment? Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Gus Colantonio. Missed you in the first half.
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. And, yes, I do agree that those stumps there, they look ugly, unsightly, and, you know, they should have been removed. I don't know who removed originally those trees, but just to cut down maybe ten, twelve-inch stump with a saw, six inches or twelve inches lower, it would not have taken much more effort. And I don't know if the town did it, or somebody else on private, but they've been there for a long time. I used to go to work in New Britain, and I seen that for a long time, but anyway, it's a good comment. They should have been cleaned up before. I was reading on the computer, I guess, you know, sometimes when you have too much time on your hands, you get into troubles. And, this came up, ten least tax-friendly states for retirees. That includes me, you know, I'm not working anymore, I'm retired. And Connecticut is number three. It's amazing. The constitutional state is a tax nightmare for many retirees. It's a real state, taxes are the tenth highest in the nation, according to the Tax Foundation. The median property tax on a two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars value is four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It's, it's a lot. And then I looked at my, my tax bill, and guess what? You know, the assessed value is one hundred and ninety. Probably I could get, if I were lucky, and sell it, two fifty, two sixty, two seventy, that's the value. But, the difference is that, you know, two ninety-one value home, the taxes are four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight. My home right here, I paid seven thousand seventy-six this year. That's forty-nine point three percent higher. I asked before, who protects or who looks after the taxpayers in Wethersfield? And you guys have not done that yet. But, anyway, I thought I would make that comment. Few months ago, on the other hand, I did ask the question, which I never got an answer, who's responsible to fix the snow shelf? The property owner, or the town? I didn't get an answer yet. Because it fits the town. They should fix, and if it's the property owner, they should be told. Last meeting, I also asked the question, intersectional side distance on Tifton along Morrison Avenue is two hundred and thirty-two feet. It doesn't take very long for the town, town engineer or anybody, to see what's good for. Again, the eighty-fifth percentile on that road, the worst part of Morrison Avenue, it's thirty-one miles per hour. I would like to know what is it good for? That's two thirty-two, which the town took the measurements years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Other public comment this evening? Lee?
Last week, I wrote a letter to Curtain Transportation, and I Xerox copies of it for several people on the board, and some of the vans are a little falling apart, not as safe as they should be, especially when you compare them with the improved, updated systems like the Greater Harvard Transit ADA vans have. I just want to say, Curtain did call me that very same day, because they got the fax to copy the letter. This is last Friday, and they said they will wash those two vans that I mentioned, vans three seven three, three seven four, the numbers were. And, my question is, how's the town going to be following up on Curtain providing safer transportation like it should? Because we're paying thirty thousand dollars higher than the other bidder, when he granted the contract a year ago or so, and we should be getting the safety that will prevent any accidents from happening from faulty material, faulty equipment. I just wonder who would be following up on Curtain, because if I still see mistakes, I want to report them, but who should be, who would be a person at town that'd be following up is what I want to know. And I thank you.
Thank you, Lee. No, we'll get you an answer after the meeting. Other public comment? Dave?
David Kirk, one forty-nine Broad Street. When I arrived here, I saw the people here, and I was wondering, why is everyone here? Did I miss something? And then I looked at my phone, thanks to technology, I looked at The Current, and then I read the article in The Current about what happened last meeting. I, fortunately, I don't always read The Current or watch the town council online. I try to, but I guess it was because of reservations by Republicans about the need or the cost and demand for these tennis courts, so they wanted to table it, and the town council voted to table it. So, that upset a lot of people, so they, they showed up to show their, their, their support for the need of tennis courts in Webb, near Webb, and, and I'm glad to see that, because most of the time, and I'm sure you're glad to see the public participation, because most of the time, there's only a few people here, and it's, it's kind of boring to see the same old speakers every week after week, and I wish that happened more often. Whenever, whenever there's an issue, people, the public should realize, if the public come out in numbers, they could influence your vote. Now, now, I read the article, and I was very surprised. I was surprised to read that it wasn't just, most of you were, had doubts about it, it was just Republican doubts. Jeff, there was a quote, Jeff recognized that, as well as Kathy Bag, she's not here anymore, but Kathy Bagley, the director of Parks and Rec, recognized, and I could read exactly what they were quoted on saying, they said that earlier in the meeting, town manager Jeff Bridges and Parks and Rec creation director Kathy Bagley spoke in support of the project, both said that there is a demand for two courts. And then it went on to say that, and even Mr. Turner said, by delaying it, it, it will, I'll just paraphrase, by delaying, it'll affect, it'll affect its, its construction for, for spring. And, so, there, there is a reason not to delay this, and, and to be honest, if it weren't for the public being here, I don't know if you guys passed it today. And, and even despite the, the number of speakers here, some of you still had doubts of whether there's a need or a demand for it, and even money got brought up, but the article said that they got an eighteen thousand dollar grant from the U.S. Tennis Association. You know, that, that's, you know, that's free, and I'm glad you guys voted for it, but I'm just glad that the public was here. Thanks.
Thank you. Other public comment? See none? Oh, I'm sorry, Bob, with the little pregnant pause tonight, waiting for that last dramatic entry.
Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. I'll be quick. I do not believe you voted tonight because you had a good turnout of citizens. I firmly believe if nobody came, you still would have voted for him, because tax, borrow, and spend is what you people do. Good night.
We have a motion to get into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Jerry. Public comment? Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Gus Colantonio. Missed you in the first half.
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. And, yes, I do agree that those stumps there, they look ugly, unsightly, and, you know, they should have been removed. I don't know who removed originally those trees, but just to cut down maybe ten, twelve-inch stump with a saw, six inches or twelve inches lower, it would not have taken much more